This is the one that I scheduled. I wonder if it's because there were two meetings. Maybe you put both of them in, so I was thinking, which one do I choose?
I put mine in like last week, just around August.
Because I went in here like.
Thank you, Marc.
Are we ready? Call the meeting order. Begin with a roll call.
Wendy Farley, here. Joe Rupel.
Here.
Chris Geyer.
Here.
Andy Casper.
Here.
Angela Wilkow.
Here.
Jacob Reifert.
Here.
Ryan Carroll.
Here. If you'll rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Thank you all for joining us for our August meeting. The board's all excited because the kids are coming back to school.
Yeah.
They are.
Is the staff ready?
They are. We'll find out next week.
You guys catching up on your sleep? So, thank you for coming for our meeting. We're going to begin with my report, which is fairly brief. I wanted to update the board on something we had talked about last week. I think we had some representatives from the SEIU talk about some issues they were having with our custodial contract with the high school, RJB, and they were appealing to us, you know, to look at some of the wage issues. We asked Dr. Harris to try to contact RJB, try to understand what some of the issues were. I know he had several conversations back and forth with RJB. He remains engaged with them. I know I was on a call with Brian and a couple of representatives from SEIU talking about the situation. You know, we did kind of reiterate that, you know, it's a collective bargaining issue between the workers and RJB. It does not directly involve us. And we also kind of went through the bid documents, you know, the bid that we approved and it's a public document. And, you know, it was a very close bid. You know, the low bid was only the low bid by, I want to say it was like $30,000, $40,000.
Closest to the bid.
Yeah, it was pretty small. So, we did pledge at that meeting, though, that certainly as an interested party, we would do anything we could to try to help the parties come to an agreement. One of the things that we did learn was that they still haven't come to a collective bargaining agreement yet and that they were in the process of doing that. Do you have any other, any further update on that?
No, other than, other than I did talk with the Vice President of RJB and she indicated to me that they were trying to schedule a meeting in time with the SEIU, maybe today, tomorrow, this week, to, you know, hopefully bring, move the collective bargaining process forward and get a contract in place. So, they're going to work hard to try and resolve this issue as soon as possible, which I encourage them to do for the benefit of everyone.
And I think, I know it's pressed on the phone call, you have two. We want this contract to be hopefully settled without, our expectation is without any stoppage or delay. So, I think at this point, unless there's, and I know we've received a number of emails, you know, that have been addressed to us on that. I will say, it's hard sometimes, well, all the emails kind of have a form to them. It's hard because they only, they have their names on there and I'm not sure I know who the emails are coming from. I don't know if they're coming from parents, custodians.
Community members.
Community members or other people around the Chicago Land area. It's hard to tell. But I think what's, we need to stay on top of this and hopefully we can, you know, hopefully come to an agreement. Is there any, any other comments on that? That's it for my report. If somebody has any questions. At this point, we'll open the meeting up to public comment. We ask people to try to limit your comments to three minutes. Please identify yourselves with connections in school district. We act, we ask you, try to keep your comments focused on board agenda items and within your comments, please try to respect the privacy of our staff and our students. We have two people signed up and then we'll open it up to anyone else. The first person signed up is Hector Aguilar. Hector? Carolina Bilabos. Did I say him right?
Yes.
Come on up, Carolina.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, board and guests. My name is Carolina Villalobos. I'm a SEIU Local 1 rap and I'm representing the custodians in Barrington High School for the last 10 years. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the custodians at Barrington High School. On July 1st, their pay was cut from $9.77 an hour to $8.50 an hour. They had workers who maintained the school clean. Can you please help them to support their families? And thank you for all your help. And I heard you have a call with my boss.
Yeah.
So, I appreciate that and thank you for your time.
Thank you. There's nobody else signed up. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board?
Sure.
Come on, Mike. Good to see you.
All right. So, you know why I'm here. You know, now that everybody's got their teacher assignments, you know, I saw your projection on the class sizes from July, which, you know, looked fantastic. And as I mentioned to you earlier today, you know, in the email, I'm a little bit surprised that there was not another, well, just specifically for North Barrington. I'm surprised that there wasn't a third section projected for first grade. Last year, we had, I have a daughter who was in kindergarten last year, so she's moving up now to first grade and is going to be in, I guess the class sizes are getting pretty big there. I talked with Mr. Johnson and he decided that he needed to add a third section for that, which I would agree with. Now, that, because of that, he ended up having to take away a section of fourth grade, which I also have a son in that class. And I'm a little disappointed. A couple of things. Number one is that in fourth grade, last year we had, well, last year in third grade, we had three sections. I believe they were 18, 19, 19, something like that. So, by combining those sections, the numbers I was given from our principal is that there would be two classes of 25, which is at the guideline, I guess. You're 25 to 27, something like that. Now, granted, my son, he has an IEP. He's got a shared aid. So, you know, himself, he's a distraction to a class. I know he is. I've been in there. I've seen it, you know. That's why he has an aid. So, even with that in the guideline, knowing that he has a, you know, a shared aid, so there's, you know, another kid who needs attention like he does. You've got two kids now. So, now you've got two kids that are basically, you know, they can be a distraction, you know. And not only that, I mean, there's plenty of other boys and girls in the class, you know, that are distracting. It seems that also when you add these, there's a, I forget what the name of the classroom is that's also in there. I think there are seven or eight kids. They spend 40, 30 or 40% of the day in the mainstream. I believe there are going to be three or four in each of the fourth grade sections coming in at certain times of the day, which brings that number, that class size number from 25 to, say, 28, 29. Now, on the website, there's a page on the enrollment which says that special education students do count in class sizes. It's a heading. You know, I'm sure you know it. But then when you go down to the next paragraph, it says, "All those students who receive special services typically join the regular education classroom up to 40% of the day. They are not included in the base enrollment number for each classroom, but are rather, are represented in the SE plus column, which reflects total possible class size." So, here it says, "Special education students do count," and then here it says, "They don't." So, what I'm seeing here is that when you have a guideline that's at 25, 27, you're not following that because you're not including these special education students that come in there, whether it's 20%, 30%, 40% of the day. There are times during the day where you have 28, 29 kids in a class. It's unacceptable. I mean, for this district, it's unacceptable. I mean, the projections you had from July, you know, again, looked fantastic, you know. And what I don't understand, again, is, you know, this wouldn't even, I wouldn't even be here if there was a third section already there for first grade. But maybe I would, you know. But, you know, none of the information regarding any class sizes or, and a lot of that stuff from the website's been, it's been removed. In fact, everything has been removed, all the past data and all that. So, it's, you know, I know we don't want to get into a situation where like last year, we have, you know, 50 parents come in here for seven different meetings when, you know, really it takes, I would think, one meeting to say, "Okay, let's do this. This is what we're going to do. We're going to do the right thing." I'm hoping this is the meeting that we do that. So, I would just like to say, I'm hoping that you're going to be providing some sort of spreadsheet data today for the entire elementary schools in the district showing good numbers and adding teachers when needed. Right?
It is on our, that is one of our discussion topics.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. You are at the right meeting.
All right.
Anyone else like to address the board? Come on up. It's good to see you again tonight.
Pardon? Yeah, nice to see you all too.
So, it's like back to school.
Yeah. Is this working?
Yes.
I guess I, anyway, you know, this gentleman was just speaking and it seemed, I couldn't hear too well, but it seemed like he had a child that was in special ed. Is that what it was?
He was, is primarily, I think it was about, was about class size.
Yeah. And I'm just wondering why, why it would happen that that class size would go up like that. I mean, if the kids have special needs, you would think that they would need a better teacher-student ratio.
And they do. They do. They get it. They also get mainstream.
Why did that, why did that happen?
We're going to be talking about that here this evening. Right. We'll try to address that question when we get to that point in the agenda.
Oh, it's, oh, you can't answer me now?
Not a dialogue, public comment.
No? Okay.
But I promise we will try to address it.
Uh huh. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'll wait, I'll be looking for them.
Is there anyone else? Yes. Good evening.
Hi, how are you?
Good. How are you?
Good, thank you. I'm Kristin Semaglio. I am at North Barrington as well. I also have a child in the fourth grade class. And the school has been amazing. It seems as though we continue to have the same issue, like in second grade, class sizes seem, this classes seem to have the same issue all the way along. So, each year, it seems like we're knocking on that door saying, "We need an extra teacher. Keep it at three teachers for the overall grade level." And this is the first year that I looked at the email and I'm like, "Oh, my God, we're down. There's two teachers and a lot of kids." And so, I think my biggest concern is, my son had an IEP because he was delayed with speech. And so, now he is basically, he's doing fantastic, but he sometimes struggles to pick up on vocabulary that's not concrete. So, my biggest concern as these class sizes get bigger is that when the teacher's presenting something that you have to really focus and concentrate and think about because it's not, you know, it's more abstract, I worry about the numbers. So, I'm hopeful that, you know, I don't know how many kids on the grade overall have an IEP, but I would wonder if there's any sort of limitation on how many IEPs can be in a classroom if there's a percentage level that you need to meet the requirement. So, that's why I'm here.
When we get to that point where we'll talk about the special ed, there are state laws and everything that govern all that. We'll try to explain it.
I mean, we've been really pleased with North Barrington and with all the teachers. I can't say enough great things about this district. And I just really hope we can get a teacher in place so that it's, things it out a little bit. But overall, thank you for everything you do because we're doing a great job, so.
Thanks. Thanks for coming out. Anybody else like to address the board? We're a friendly group. We like it. Ron, you want to say anything? Anyone else? Going once, going twice? Okay, we'll declare public comment closed. I think we will. When we get to the enrollment conversation, we'll try to address all of those questions. We'll move into Dr. Harris's report.
Thank you, Brian, and good evening, audience and board. I have a short superintendent's report this evening. First, I wanted to just point out a picture that was taken last week with all of our new teachers that were able to attend our induction week. We had over 60 new teachers there and excited about each and every one of them. I know several board members were able to come to the luncheon on Wednesday and greet some of them. Got a great group, very talented. And again, we, you know, our staff continues to work hard to recruit good people and we still will have a few more even between now and next Thursday. Some of them are contingent upon the personnel report this evening, as well as possibly a couple of other scenarios which may play itself out here over the next week or so. So, anyway, probably we're anticipating near 65 new people by the time we're done. So, great group, great week. Kudos to Linda and her staff for leading that and all the district administrative team that participated. It was, it was a good week of learning for those individuals. Also, as a reminder, we are in back-to-school mode across the district. Today, Dr. Fuller gave me an update that we passed out. Over 60% of the iPads for our middle school kids over the first two days. I know we're going to have a group coming in over the next two days and excited about deploying those opportunities for kids at that level. That's a huge undertaking, getting every kid with an Apple ID and every kid with a device that's ready to go on day one next Thursday. Teachers will report next Tuesday and Wednesday. Next Tuesday, we will have a general gathering at Barrington High School with one time a year with all nearly 1,200 staff in the gym and I look forward to that opportunity to chat with them and give them an opportunity to think about where we're headed and how to get there, so. And then the building level administrators have, you know, activities and professional development and time for teachers to be in their room on the other day. Grades one through 12 will begin on August 20th, next Thursday. Kindergarten begins the following Tuesday with the Early Learning Center here in this building the following Wednesday. So, we stage those youngest learners in and looking forward to opening our schools next week. So, it's always an exciting time. I told our administrative team this week that in this profession, it's unique, that we always have kind of a start and an end and it is rejuvenating each year to recharge the batteries and start with a new group of students, parents, and it is exciting time. So, we're looking forward to it and prepared to go. Unless there's any questions, that concludes the superintendent's report this evening.
I'll share with you just a really quick comment that you might find and the board might appreciate. I was at a family get-together this past weekend where a couple of my nieces came up, and I think, and I weren't quite sure if they were, how sincere they were, but they actually thanked Barrington for moving the finals to before the break because it served as the impetus to get their high school to make the same change.
Was that District 211?
No.
Oh.
It was, it was Kinsdale.
Oh, okay.
And, and they cited us and they said, I'm not sure we want to start as early, but we like the idea of doing it, so.
It's always good to be a front runner.
Yeah, well, every once in a while.
Yes.
Any other questions for Brian? Good luck on the first day of school.
Exciting time.
Let's go to our committee reports. Do we have any committee reports?
We do. We have facilities committee, very productive facilities meeting last week. And we're going to be seeing some of our information this evening, kind of updating us on our summer projects, as well as a rough timeline for the bridge. But the other thing that has come up is a concern about the structures on the Kelsey Road property. And you'll notice when we get to it that we still have room left in our budget this year and so with the board's agreement, we would like to send a bid out, enter the bidding process for demolition of those structures. So, if there's.
The old Knights of Columbus building?
Yes. I think there might be a few other buildings there too.
There's another house and a shed, I think.
Because there's some concern about them being vacant, as you can all imagine what might accompany that. So, is it, if there's anyone who is opposed to that, please?
Let's talk about it when we get to the agenda. We'll see what, because you're going to use some of those dollars, right?
Well, we're not sure what it would cost yet. We just want to go out to bid on it. So, we don't know what it would cost yet.
So, really, we're asking the board's approval to go to bid is what, all we're doing. And then we'll come back once we have that, some more concrete information about the costs.
Does anybody have any concerns going out to bid?
Yeah, it's too much. We don't need to do it, but.
It's a big target for kids sometimes when they have vacant properties to kind of go hang out and then it becomes a safety and liability issue for us. And we've got to try to keep them boarded up and keep them maintained to a point where they're not, you know, it's a red flag for us. So, we're paying attention to it and we just wanted approval to see how much it would cost to get it leveled up.
Let's see if we can get it done this far.
That's, that would be the goal.
Yeah.
And then I just wanted to give the board an update about the Input 220 Committee. The, in the, in May, the committee formed some subgroups and I just thought I'd let you know what those are. Benchmarking other school districts, transportation and traffic studies, extracurricular activities, including arts and sports. And then studying reports on teen sleep and how different time, start times might be impacted by, might impact the sleep schedules. So, we had a meeting of the leadership last, two weeks ago and each subgroup chairperson gave a little bit of an update. And I think the board would be really proud of the fact that there's, this is a very diverse group of people that aren't really coming with a lot of preconceived notions and there's a lot of balance amongst the people at the table. So, just so you know that, our next meeting is on Thursday, September 3rd. And they are keeping with, they're trying to hold as much as possible to the original schedule that was created that includes a public input session on November 12. So, right now, they'd like to try to work toward that. I'll keep you posted if, if something changes.
So, they've already had some robust conversations just from their summer studies?
Yes. Some of the groups have met outside of the larger meetings and, you know, as you can imagine, there's a lot of data gathering and reading, more for some groups than others, but a lot of very good questions being asked.
Any other committee reports?
So, finance, we had, I would say, a productive meeting also on July 28th. 15, 16 budgets looking pretty good at the moment. We'll talk about that tonight. And then there's a couple of items on the consent agenda to take a look at.
Any other committee reports? I know Wendy, Brian and I are going to meet on some legislative priorities tomorrow.
Tomorrow morning.
Right, tomorrow morning? Excellent. Any other activity reports? Anything anybody wants to mention?
What we did on our summer vacation.
What you did on your summer vacation.
Going to write a report on that or?
You know, I, and I guess I, maybe I should have said this in my report too. For those that weren't at our last meeting, well, no, you know, it's going to come up later in an action item. I'll mention that. Okay, shall we move into this evening's consent agenda, which I believe we have minutes? So, we've got open and closed from June 16th, 15. We have open and closed from 7:14, 15. And then we have our special meeting and the closed session from July 2nd, 2015. We also have a revised personnel report that's on board docs. Is there a motion to approve the amended consent agenda? Yep. Okay. Some of. Roll call vote?
Chris Geyer.
Yes.
Joe Rupel.
Yes.
Wendy Farley.
Yes.
Andy Casper.
Yes.
Angela Wilkow.
Yes.
Jacob Reifert.
Yes.
Ryan Carroll.
Yes, motion passes. Our next action item. We've got, oh, we've got minutes from open and closed October 2nd, 2012 and November 6th, 2012, open and close. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
This, this is where my question was. Why are these minutes being approved now, three years later? What's the delay?
I don't know. Was there anything specific about these minutes?
There wasn't anything specific other than we did not have the copyright, Janine. And so, therefore, we finally were able, we're cleaning up some, some of the older ones. Older minutes that, we're about there. We don't have many left, do we? Okay. A few.
We go recreate this.
That's right. From, that we were missing and when I got, I noticed that we had several gaps in there. We wanted to go back and clean this up. That's why.
So, you know, at the last couple of meetings, we've been trying to clean up some of those holes in the minutes. So, I don't know if there's anything.
I will say, I think, you know, Sandra and Janine have done a great job of, you know, for the past couple of years.
know, for the past couple of years that I've been on the board, of keeping it so up to date, and it's been, it's been good, because I think it's, it allows for transparency to the public of exactly what we're doing. And so, thank you for your hard work on this. It's just, I was surprised to see this one so late. It's unusual.
It is, but we do need to take the action.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
Yeah, we broke it out separate, so those that were not on the board at that time can abstain.
Okay.
Did we get, we haven't got a motion yet. So is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any other questions? Rule call vote?
Sandra Bradler.
Yes.
Chris Gatter.
Epstein.
Wendy Caster.
Yes.
Angela Wilkamp.
Yes.
Joe Rupel.
Yes.
Wendy Caster.
Yes.
Brian Yell.
Yes, motion passes. Our next action item, is there a motion to approve the filling of two open positions on the Input 220 Advisory Council with the recommendations presented to the board?
So, second.
So, we've had, since we last met, right, we've had a couple of folks that have had to withdraw their participation in Input 220, and based on trying to match up, you know, some of the perspectives that were represented by those folks, whether it's high school, you know, without parents, we've mentioned, the two names that are being presented to us are Barbara Harris and Gary Schmidt. And I believe, if I understand, Jeff, I'm looking at you, I guess, for confirmation, from the write-up, both of these folks remain interested in serving on 220.
They do. I've spoken with both, and they are willing to serve.
Discussion.
I, I think Jeff has done a, Jeff and the co-chairs have done a really nice job of trying to find similar profiles and points of view.
Mm-hmm. Just a rule call vote?
Chris Gatter.
Yes.
Wendy Caster.
Yes.
Angela Wilkamp.
Yes.
Wendy Caster.
Yes.
Joe Rupel.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. And the revised membership list, that sits on the website, on the Input 220 website?
Yes, it will be updated as of this evening.
Okay, thank you. Okay, our next motion, is there a motion to approve the amended Board of Education meeting schedule for September two thousand and fifteen through April two thousand and seventeen?
So moved. Second.
So this is what I was gonna mention earlier. The, for people who weren't here, the board is changing their meeting schedule for, you know, the next couple of years. And what we're gonna do is move to a committee of the whole meeting for our first meeting of every month. So it'll remain the first and third Tuesdays of each month, but when we have, in the months that we have two meetings. The first meeting will be a committee of the whole, right here in the same room, location doesn't change, and then our business meeting will be on the third Tuesday every month. So, what is being proposed here is essentially a revised schedule that indicates that change.
Brian, could you just explain the difference between the two meetings?
So, so, a committee, at the committee of the whole meeting, we will never take any action, right? So by law, you can only take action at a business meeting when you notice an actual action. Committee of the whole meeting will be intended really just for discussion items. And at our board retreat, we decided to try to utilize the committee of the whole structure to provide a more in-depth conversation on some, on big, key strategic issues. So, for instance, our next meeting will be a committee of the whole meeting where we're gonna talk about instructional technology as, as a big conversation, right? And the October meeting, we're gonna talk about long-term facilities needs, right? So, and there could be two or three topics in the, in each committee of the whole. But the committee of the whole will be set up, you know, we won't have action items, we won't have committee reports, we'll still have public comment, but it's intended to be more of a constructive dialogue and conversation to get more in-depth on some big strategic issues. And then all of our actions will take place at the business meeting, which is that second meeting of each month.
And just, in, as an attempt to avoid frustration on the part of the audience, there may be times during the committee of the whole meeting where we will have closed-session topics. And so even though it cites five-thirty as a start time, there may be times when we may take a chunk of that meeting out and have a closed-session topic. We're gonna have to figure out how we're gonna manage that best in terms of communicating that with the community, because I'd hate to have people come at five-thirty if we know we're not gonna be sitting here for that.
I think what, what our intent, what we've set our intent is, is to try to start the committee of the whole at five-thirty and keep our closed session at the back end. But, but, we'll, we'll see. Just depending, maybe sometimes we'll have to be flexible. Any other discussion?
I, I think this is a great idea to communicate as well, to, you know, there's something that we're interested in, and this is a discussion, this is a very tiny column, and, you know, add your comment and ask questions, and listen to the board talk about things. Because as, when I'm new to this, I didn't understand that, you know, there are many topics that are not closed-session topics that the board, you know, talks about in an open forum, just gives a chance for more in-depth discussion and a more in-depth understanding of the community as well, as, you know, what we're thinking, what you're thinking, in, in terms of a bit more transparency.
Yeah, we're excited to try this, and we'll be looking forward to feedback, too. Rule call vote?
Wendy Caster.
Yes.
Joe Rupel. Yes.
Sandra Bradler.
Yes.
Angela Wilkamp.
Yes.
Wendy Caster.
Yes.
Brian Yell.
Yes, motion passes. Okay, let's go to our discussion items, starting with our enrollment updates. I'll turn it over to Dr. Harris.
Okay. Thank you again, Brian. I'd like to ask Linda Klobuchar to join me over here at the table. Last month, we had shared with the board that we were continuing to monitor all of our enrollment. Our registrations at that time was, we still had several outstanding students that had not registered, so we were pursuing that. Linda can give you the update on that. Bottom line is, we're, we almost have all of our students registered at this time. So, you know, between the last meeting and tonight, people showed up and verified residency as well as enrolled their children, and so, which was good news. And so we do believe tonight, we have a much better summary of what our enrollment looks like, specifically at the elementary level, which, as the board knows, is always a moving target at this time of year, especially when we, today. We even adjusted this as late as this afternoon at several circumstances.
Didn't a set of triplets come in?
No, but we had a set of triplets last Thursday or Friday at one of our schools that created some challenges for us. So, that happens. And, so therefore, we also have people leaving the district, too. This is the time of year where we get records requests from other districts, and so it does fluctuate. It does go bad, as you know. And so I'm gonna turn it over to Linda and let her walk through some of the details. I, I did share with the board some of our recommendations on some of the issues here, and I'd let Linda speak specifically on each one of these. We'll start with the elementary level.
Can I, can, before we dive into the numbers, you know, in our last meeting, we reviewed that chart, right, about people who were in the numbers but hadn't yet registered, some people we hadn't contacted. Has that number dwindled to a very small number?
Tremendously. We actually have one, two, two elementaries with a hundred percent contact and proof of residency, one elementary with one left, one, two elementaries with two left, and Lines has eight left, but there are dual-language students. We still have some at Sunny Hill, but we, the families were there for jumpstart, they're just needing to continue to bring proof in. So we're very, very confident-
So you're feeling very good with these numbers?
That our numbers are much closer than they were when I spoke to you in July. Just to kind of go over where we are, in July, when I sat in front of you, the chart looked pretty good. The school we talked about was Lines, second grade. All three sections were one student over guidelines, and then we had one student over at fourth grade at Grove, one student over at first grade at Rose, and one student over second grade at Rose. So it was looking pretty good. If you look at the chart at the bottom, the totals chart, you will see overall, we are below guidelines in all grade levels, and we have three, our dual-language program mostly, that is a little, or, or within guidelines. So across the district, it looks very, very good. It's been a really good summer. Just in the last two weeks, of course, we have all of our late enrollments, many families really, really hurrying to close on their homes so that they can start the school year with us. So it's been pretty exciting. So what I'd like to do is kind of walk you through the chart that's in front of you tonight and have a conversation about where we are.
I'm sorry, is there any, we can get a copy of this or see it?
Yeah, we have one.
We're gonna be talking about number three and no idea.
I'm going to go over that.
I know, but we can't see what we're talking about.
Oh, I don't have, I just, I don't have copies. I apologize.
We'll give, we'll give you copyright as soon as we're done with it. You can have my copy.
Yeah, can you put it on the screen? On email or something, maybe?
Maybe, let me try.
Only if it's easy, I don't want to disrupt the meeting.
All right, go ahead.
Do you have other slides you're going through?
I will attempt to.
Okay, so why don't you give us the update?
I'll attempt to.
We'll see if you can find it.
I, I'm going to go ahead and start, and I'll try to orally go through it, and Dr. Harris can try to pull it up for us. If you look at Countryside, Countryside, all are in the blue or black, except for second grade did pop at Countryside. Speaking of triplets, Brian, that's where they came.
Was that the triple one?
So, they're adorable. So, as you can see-
All three of them?
All three of them, girls. Second grade popped, we are now over guidelines at second grade at Countryside. Going, just going through our primary grades, we're fine across the district until you get to Rose. Rose, second grade, also popped. They are at twenty-five, twenty-five, and twenty-five. And then just today, they're first grade, student registered for first grade. So Rose is first grade, both sections are over guidelines. Second grade, three sections are over guidelines. And then the only other area where you see the, every section over guideline is Grove. Grove's fourth grade is currently at twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and twenty-nine. I think when you look at the rest of the chart, you see where we are within guidelines or below guidelines. Now, we also look at our special education population, which is the green column, and you're going to see two reds in that column. I'm going to address both of them.
And could you, for the, because it was one of the questions that's kind of posed by a couple of our speakers, right? Can you just talk a little bit, I mean, let me just talk. Mike, you addressed what looked like maybe conflicting statements about whether or not special ed was included or not. In fact, and I think you've seen this before, there's actually two columns. So what it's talking about is, there are in fact two columns, one that includes the special ed and one that does not. So we, we look at it both ways.
Well, but you have, like, the columns that show a couple of tiers, sections, three sections, example nineteen, twenty-eight, here.
This thing, this is the one from July, so one that was on, what's that? North grade and fourth grade, you have in your seventeen, sixteen, sixteen. And then on special ed, you have six. So, in fact, every one of those three, seventeen, sixteen, sixteen, are actually higher than that, because at part of the day, you know, those kids come in. So, having a seventeen, sixteen, and thirteen is misleading.
Right, but if you look at the column that is called average plus, that's the average including those students.
Okay.
Including the special ed. So we look at it both ways. And then to the point, it was asked about some of the rules around special ed and the inclusion in the regular classroom. You guys want to just talk a little bit quickly to that?
Connie, would you like to address that?
I mean, it runs a spectrum, obviously.
I'm sorry, would you repeat the question again?
Sure, the quest, the question that had come up during public comment was-
How many IEPs come in the class?
Yeah, and it, and how, and how we look at special ed kids that come into the regular ed classrooms, and what are the laws around that, and are there limits to how many that can be in a classroom?
Correct. When we look at children being included into the general education classroom, it's very specific to the individual child's needs. So not every child is going to be in a reading class or a language arts class. They may be included in science or social studies. It's based on individual need. The law that, that I think I heard, or guideline, I want to say, is the seventy-thirty guideline, which means you cannot exceed thirty percent of the class being children with IEPs.
However, that does not include children with speech-language IEPs, is that correct?
Articulation, correct.
The special ed laws are complicated.
Correct.
They're, they're not easy to explain.
Right.
And also, it's important to note that every child is unique. You know, they're all different. Every situation is unique. The services, the support, and then the, you know, the intervention that's needed to allow them to achieve, along with their peers, is, is individualized. So, and in almost every one of our scenarios here on this chart, every building, when we have children mainstreamed or included in the regular ed environment, they have additional support. We have staffed things very well, whether it's one-on-one aid support, two-on-one aid support, sometimes the actual special education teachers in a co-taught environment in the classroom. So it varies, and there's different scenarios plays out at different times of the day, all over the, the chart here. So, that's why when we say we talk with the building principal and talk with the staff about what's the appropriate needs and level there, that plays into the decision-making when we, especially when we get tight in some of our areas. So, that indication on here is misleading to some degree. It's an indicator, but it doesn't tell the whole story.
So looking at those classrooms, first starting with Lines, you do know that as a district, we do cap and transfer kindergarten. We stop, when we have our twenty-third student-
And that's, this is the current numbers that are up there on the screen?
Nobody can read.
I know, that's the problem we have, see, that's why it's just-
It's not helpful.
Here, I'll tell you what. Take, take mine, I'm gonna share with Penny, and you guys share, you guys can share this one.
I have one, too, because I have it on my screen. I can see it. Sure.
Take this. Here's someone else's.
Sorry for these many interruptions.
It's okay.
No, it's all yours.
So you do see Lines, we are one over in kindergarten, but Connie's team and I have met, and these children will, based on their needs, will not be integrated in the kindergarten. But we do house the program that they need at Lines. Please remember that all the children that are in this column of SE have a full-time certified teacher, okay? So we don't count them as a section because they, at times, step into the gen ed classroom, but they do have a full-time certified teacher, and most of them have aides. So that's why that one is there, and we feel very confident about that one, and we're within, we're within our kindergarten numbers. The other one is-
So, am I hearing this right, that each child has an aide or a teacher? And so do the, does the aide and the teacher go into the general ed classroom with them?
Yes.
So whenever they're in the general ed classroom, they will, there will be an additional aide and/or teacher?
Can I make a, can I jump in real quick? It's, again, it's all based on individual student need. Usually, when there is a cluster of students, perhaps two to three, we would certainly send in an assistant to be there to help support those two to three students, but they don't just stop there. They also are there to help general education students as well.
Okay, okay, thank you.
The other one is the North Barrington, fourth grade, and I can explain what took place at North Barrington a week ago. North Barrington's first grade went over guidelines. They were at twenty-five and twenty-five, when Brian and I met and looked at these numbers at the end of last week. We wanted to have a conversation prior to the release of class lists, because we feel it's very important to try to get the right information out to parents. When that became twenty-five and twenty-five, and we looked at the rest of the classes, at that time, the fourth grade was at three sections, at seventeen, sixteen, and seventeen. When you put those three sections into two, it was twenty-five and twenty-five, which was within guidelines. So the decision was to maintain the staffing and cover the first grade, which was four students over guidelines. Since we made that decision, we have had two more fourth grade students enroll. Their enrollment is still popping, they're still coming in the door.
Today.
Today, this went from twenty-five to twenty-five to twenty-six to twenty-six. So- So there are five students in the self-contained special education program at North Barrington that will step in for some coursework with aide assistant. And that's the red.
So let's start with the update that you had sent on Thursday.
Last week I had shared and we wanted to move forward. We knew that the countryside situation in second grade and the Rose situation in second grade was way beyond our comfort level for various reasons. There was rooms at both buildings and felt like it was needed and necessary to move forward. However, we did not have it allocated in our budget, so we wanted, you know, initially. The board had not seen that. It was not in our initial staffing allocation. And therefore, you know, we would like to move forward and permanently place these, those two sections. They're needed and for all the reasons stated, and they're way above, you know, the stated guidelines for first grade. So we also know when we add sections at the elementary level, not only these two, but maybe possibly some others, we need additional specials time. We need art, music, and PE that goes along with it. Now, we're going to work hard to try and, you know, reorganize some schedules and navigate that. However, we do need some leeway on that to be able to fill those, backfill those special schedules in case we need to add sections for our teachers there. So that's why, you know, I requested at the minimum an additional two and a half staff at the elementary level. However, you know, a couple of these scenarios continue to evolve as well. So as Linda mentioned, the first grade situation at Rose, you know, we're continuing to be concerned about that. Again, it's similar to the North Barrington situation that we just corrected recently. Exact name, number of kids, similar scenario. We would like to work further with Derek straight on that principal at Rose to determine what's the appropriate solution there. You know, we haven't finalized that, but, you know, again, I don't want to get too far ahead of the budget situation and make sure the board is comfortable with this before we move forward. Certainly, we're prepared, you know, to hire staff quickly and get things in place. There is room at Rose as well to make that, that change. And then the other two situat, those are all the primary situations. And as the board knows, we've talked about...
Can I ask you a question on that? In your write-up, you also indicated that Grove wanted to solve their fourth grade issue with an aide, right?
That is correct. We actually spoke to principals again today in preparation of talking to you this evening. We spent quite a long time on the phone with Dr. Kaye and she actually met with her fourth grade teachers this afternoon, all three of them, and their request or possibility to fix it. There's a couple of things going on at Grove. Number one, they don't have a room. They have the very large, those of you that are familiar with Grove, they have that very large room downstairs. And a lot of times, Dr. Kaye will take two teachers in two classrooms and house two classrooms within one space. That works really well when you have two teachers that can co-teach well together with a large group of children. Looking at the makeup of her fourth grade teachers, she truly believes that her, what she would like, instead of another teacher and rearranging all of that, is to ask for a couple certified aides. You know, if you think about what we did at Lions last year, remember Lions fifth grade popped very late last year and we ended up getting a certified aide that took groups of kids for literacy and math and, you know, kind of that extra set of hands. I think it worked very well there. Cindy Kaye would like an aide for each classroom. She has one already, a special education aide, that will be in a classroom with the child that can help. So she would really like to solve the problem with aide support. And we really try to listen to the principals in the buildings to make it work for their building and their staff.
We had a similar discussion with Mr. Johnson at North Barrington as well. And he indicated as well, unless this situation changes, that aide support in that, again, fourth grade environment would be a reasonable solution there as well. But again, we want to continue to monitor it over the next couple of days to see what, what occurs there. But he indicated the same thing.
Okay, quickly, I don't want to get into a lot, but we'll...
I just, you know, our North Barrington class has always been at like twenty for the last few years, so that's what our parents are looking for. So we're looking at an additional eight students in the class. Like I volunteer for all the lines in North Barrington. I did a lot of the last couple of years. And they're able to be successful there because of those class sizes. I have been really completely disappointed with the tax levy going up, that my son's been stuck in a class with twenty-eight kids.
I understand. We haven't finished our conversation yet, so... But thank you for voicing your concern. Did you want to move to middle school? Is that where you were headed?
Can I ask a question on that later? So the headcount, FTE, if, if it does go to plus two-point-five or whatever the case may be, how does that compare with how we were year-over-year from last year? Remember last year, you and your team did a really deep dive into the numbers at the elementary school level, especially with teachers and aides? I'm just wondering, you, how, how does that compare?
If you think about a year ago, there were a total of eleven FTE cut at the elementaries because we were saying that we were going down in sizes. Over the course of the summer, we ended up adding seven of those back. This year, we reduced two FTE and we have added lines back at this time. The second FTE, if you remember, is for our STEM teacher that will be working at three schools for that initiative. So we are at actually zero, you know...
So right now, we're at flat, but the proposal...
Unless we add something tonight. Unless we add this evening. That is correct.
Okay, okay.
But we also, our enrollment is up a little bit as well.
Yes.
And we won't, until we get a final number, I don't want to project until everything lays out. We are up.
It'd be interesting too to see, you know, just, I don't know if you can do the math quickly, but how, how up are we at an elementary school level? I don't need per grade, but, you know, is it enough to justify two additional teachers? So are we up, you know, forty-plus kids?
You know what's so difficult, Wendy, is because we have community schools, it makes it very difficult. It's been very interesting doing this for three years because it seems like every grade level that's sitting at the top of the guidelines is the one that we have four and five students walk in. It's just really been strange because if you would take a, I don't know, some of those Grove fourth graders, you could place them at, you know, six of our other seven schools and we would be fine.
Right, and I'm just thinking of the budget, year-over-year budget. And the teacher, so we're flat this year, year-to-year, which means hopefully from a financial standpoint, we'll be pretty flat. Does that include the full-day kindergarten teachers that we've added? Or are you taking them out of this number because hopefully we'll be breaking even with the tuition that's being paid?
That is correct. The teachers that we have hired for our enrichment part of our program will be paid by parent fee. And we're actually looking at that financially right now and we're about right where we thought we would be as far as offsetting the costs for staffing purposes through a parent fee.
So with the addition of the full-time kindergarten teachers, are they included in the number that you're looking to up tonight?
No, no, that's an outlier and that's because there's a separate revenue, you know, source to offset that. So when we look at our overall stat, it's going to be up for sure, including those kindergarten staff. But we've got a revenue source, you know, that's offsetting that with the fee.
Linda, is, I'm sorry.
Well, what I was going to say is I want to get to a point here very quickly where I want to get a sense from the board at what level, if any, we're comfortable increasing the kind of contingency headcount for Dr. Harris to try to address some of these issues. So I'm looking for kind of questions to kind of get us to that point.
Well, my question was, is everyone on this list, you know, when you had this list on in July, not everyone on the list had registered.
That is correct.
So has every number on this list registered? Because we were making some assumptions last time that we weren't quite certain about.
Well, if I can just speak to the areas of concern, okay? So Rose, second grade, which is at twenty-five, 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 a hundred percent of those students are registered. Rose, first grade, a hundred percent of those students are registered. Countryside, second grade, and I'll be more than happy to give you a copy of this, a hundred percent of those kids are registered. Grove, fourth grade, a hundred percent of those students are registered. Lions kindergarten, a hundred percent are registered. North Barrington, fourth, a hundred percent of those kids are registered, Angela. So these are children in seats.
Okay.
Great question.
Are outstanding ones that you mentioned before scattered amongst other grade levels of other schools?
So the way I see it then, you know, some of these borderline classrooms can possibly get worse as you look at those scenarios, so...
Or better.
Or better, or better, you know, people are moving out, of course. So historically, we've provided our superintendent with at least some level of flexibility to be able to react to these kinds of issues so that we don't have exploding classrooms. Where we have the space and we can allocate a teacher, I mean, I think the guidelines are in place for a reason. I don't think that we try to abuse our ability to put the right number of students in front of a teacher. So, I mean, I would, I would be willing to advocate for, you know, giving Dr. Harris the ability to, you know, have that contingency. We've always limited it, but we've always had something in place since I've been around. So I think it's important that they're able to react to what's happening as it happens.
And for, for folks that are kind of tuning, you know, watching this process for the first time, right? The way, the way it works is, you know, the board that's watching the budget, right, will allow Dr. Harris headcount, right? And then Dr. Harris works with the leadership, with Linda and the leadership in each building to try to address the right solution for that building, for that group of kids, for that group of teachers. However, like we just heard, Grove chose to do it one way, others choose another way. We're just trying to allocate FTE to give the staff flexibility to work through those solutions.
Thank you.
So can I just ask a question to compare the write-up that we got last week? You're requesting two-point-five FTE that would allow for the two new second-grade teachers, countryside and Rose. If I'm hearing you right, there's at least one additional now at Rose, so now that's three-point-five, correct?
Maybe. We might consider some type of a halftime situation there. It depends. I want to work with the principal there to see how he wants to, you know, because class lists have gone out. So sometimes that is better to provide a, like a targeted reading person to help with, you know, so we'll see.
I misunderstood then. I thought you...
Well, maybe. I don't know yet. You know, we're going to continue to work with them and...
The request for two-point, two-point-five that we received is solid.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's...
We need those.
That's, at this point, that's outside of the contingency. Contingency is on top.
That's correct.
And so you have, I mean, if I...
That's correct.
Well, I mean, he's asking her for those.
Yes.
But if you look at this sheet, right, if I go in addition to the two-point-five, I've got one, two, three others?
Yeah, that's what Chris and I came up with, six total.
Yeah, right. I mean, you're looking at around, of course, depending on how many the arts are, you know, that could be six, six and a half, right? So, so, you know, can people get comfortable at two and a half? Can people get comfortable at six? Are you more comfortable somewhere in between?
It seems as if the two-and-a-half...
You mean the levels?
Six, are you saying six for elementary level? I mean, you've never said...
He's not asking for anything for middle school or high school.
Middle school and high school, we are, as I had shared previously, we are solid. Their schedules are set. I mean, they are, are ready to go. Now, I'm not saying high school sometimes comes up, you know, we may need a point-two, something like that, but I certainly could work within that with, you know, some leeway here.
Is the contingency at all levels?
Correct, and it would still be that one. It would still be that one.
Yeah, I would want that latitude.
So the difference in...
Make sure that you have that latitude. I'm pregnant for it.
So the difference in, I think, how we're experiencing this this year is, in the past, sometimes we'd say, okay, you've got five contingencies. Let us know how you draw from that five. And if you get in trouble, we'll replenish the pot or consider adding more. So we didn't do it that.
We did. We only gave them two though.
There was two.
And those have gone.
Should have asked for more.
Yep. So, so the two-point-five in the memo, the two-point-five in the memo from Thursday, to me, I mean, you're asking very concretely for those teachers, for that FTE in a certain place here. So to me, the contingency is above and beyond that to give, provide you flexibility to fill in where you need to after we leave here tonight.
That's correct.
Okay.
And there might be some combination of aide support, as we mentioned, as well as teaching. So it's a combination.
So to me, the question, there's two questions. Is the two-point-five okay? And then if the two-point-five is okay, how much do we feel comfortable giving on top of that for flexibility?
I agree.
So I think we're all comfortable with the two-point-five.
How much more, how much above the two-point-five are you comfortable?
So then move that off the table and then go to the, go to the next question. So you have three-point-five. So that's, that's where we are.
So where in that range are you comfortable?
Brian, you've talked to every principal that's affected by this.
You know, I, I think Linda and I chatted about this this afternoon. We would like the latitude to go up to four. However, I don't think we'll get there and I don't want to hesitate to come back.
Four, four above the two and a half.
That's correct. That would give us enough room to deal with anything that occurred. You know, again, it may be some combination of teaching support and aide support, you know, in that situation. If it's less than that, we'll make it work. But four would definitely get us a good point.
Then I just want to make sure I understand, so two-point-five is an additional two-point-five over last year. And then an additional four would be six-point-five FTE that we're adding in addition to what we had last year. Are we flat at the high school level and the middle school level, or are we seeing any reductions there?
High school's flat. A middle school went up a little bit because of the schedule. So we did add some staffing, but we built that into the budget from the very beginning because we knew we were going to reorganize the middle school schedule. You know, and that was way back. Yeah.
Yeah, I just, so my concern is that we're adding headcount and I think that that's where we need to be the most careful because this isn't just a special project that we're funding for one year. We're putting teachers in the classroom and they're going to, you know, develop relationships with our students and our teachers and parents. And this is an investment and I don't look at this as, you know, a one-year deal. And I think we need to be real careful because I think we're getting into a significant amount of money year-over-year, adding six and a half more. So I just, I'm a little worried about where we're going to make that up in the budget. Do you have any ideas of where we could make some cuts in order to keep our budget flat year-over-year?
We, Mr. Dubauer and I have already looked at that and actually in our budget update tonight, you know, we feel comfortable, you know, with that additional staffing in the budget. We can, you know, address that this evening. In the staff line items, we created enough ability to add those additional staff. We still feel like we're going to be in a very positive budget situation.
And I will say, I mean, it's hard to predict with middle school, the way you schedule middle school, how much it might affect staffing, right? But the lower cohort number from fifth grade, right, is going to move to the middle school for the first time this year. Right, so, you know, my expectation walking into the actual budget process is the middle school staffing may see a reduction. It's unclear if, I'd love to see the numbers across the board. Would really start to increase in enrollment outside of full-day kindergarten at elementary, which would reverse a trend. You know, it would be significant.
It does seem like the numbers are higher.
I wish, I really wish we had the number tonight of how many additional elementary school levels.
Does anybody have easy access to last year's chart? We have the numbers.
The issue with, this is, but this is a preliminary thing and until we get all the adds and drops, it's really, yeah, I mean, I would, I would not want you to be hanging, you know, being, making a decision based on this when we know this is going to look different a week from now. I know it's going to look different. Maybe not significantly, but it's going to look different.
But is it, you know, so we're adding six and a half in headcount, are we, is the enrollment up? But is it, you know, so we're adding six and a half in headcount, are we, is the enrollment up so much that we have six additional classrooms full of kids?
In certain situations, yes.
I just can't see that, so if we have twenty on average in a classroom, that's, you know, two hundred and forty more elementary kids, right? So...
We don't have two hundred and twenty.
Two hundred and twenty more additional elementary kids. And I, I guess that's possible, the housing, I think, is picking up. But is that, is it accurate to say that it is around that number?
Well, I, I think part of it is, Wendy, kind of going back to what I said. If these students that registered at Grove would have registered at Lyons, we wouldn't need an FTE for it.
I know.
I mean, that's what's, that's just what's so difficult, is that, so it, it just depends on what students walk in our door as to whether, now, if you think about, we had, we reduced eleven, we brought seven back. We had, so that was four that we reduced, this year we're at zero. So, if we're adding six, we're two point five staff members over the last two years up at the elementary level. Just real simple math.
You guys did so much work last year of really diving deep and, and making some very challenging decisions. And I feel like this year, we're, we're not challenging ourselves to the level that we did last year with, with this exercise. And I, I just hate for your hard work to, a year later, you know, we're, we're up even more. And so, last year's all the hard work that we did to get there is...
Well, if you remember...
Why would you say that? To me, it seems like they've done even more work this year on this.
Well, I'm looking at the numbers as a whole.
I think, are you talking more about, like, combining as far as, because I think that now we've, we've set a new strategy in place as far as, you know, kids that have consistently, you know, been accepted into another school, that we've developed a new strategy, that we are not going to go back then and then reevaluate and then, you know, perhaps displace them after they've been in a particular classroom for a certain period of time. When you do that, you kind of accept the fact that a result is, sometimes you're, you know, your numbers won't be at optimum, you know, in the black. It's not always, you know, sometimes they're going to be a little bit low, sometimes they might push us a little bit over.
It depends on, it depends on where they fall, you know, where the BVs fall in these little boxes.
You know, and as a community, and, you know, is, is trying to, you know, promote each child's growth, I think that was something that we decided upon and were comfortable with. So, you know, while it doesn't create quite as much legwork then of, you know, kind of looking through requests and petitions and things like that, it does, you know, perhaps, you know, create some, some places where you're like, oh, shoot.
If, if you remember when I spoke to you at the beginning of the year about the class size committee that we worked with, Angela's making a really valid point. One of the recommendations that we shared that came from that committee was petitions. You know, each year, we have kind of backed the petitions out, sent them back to their home school, had them reapply, you know, made them wait till July or August. So, one of the recommendations is, please don't do that to our families. So, I think that's one of the things we have taken off. Wendy, I can get you that data. We don't have that many petition students, but it could be that, you know, some petition students are in some numbers that pushed it over. And that's kind of a commitment that I thought my directive was to go ahead and not displace those families, so let's deal with it. But I think overall, you're looking at about a two point five FTE increase over the last two years at the elementary level overall. And I would say, based on what I'm understanding from the housing market, that...
We're having, you know, and you had, as Penny just looked up, and, you know, doing this kind of on a fly, but a year ago in August, right, so at this meeting in August, we were at thirty-three twenty-four versus the thirty-three forty-nine. So, we're only up about twenty-five kids.
So, Lyndon, can I ask you a couple of questions? So, so Sunny Hill as an example, so that first grade and third grade there, where there's four sections, is there any reason not to make three out of those?
Yes, I actually had that conversation this morning, today with Irma also. Please know that we have really done our homework for this.
Well, I'm sure you have, I just...
Yeah, good, it's a good question. Remember, these are T, two of the classes, Chris, are TBE classes, okay? There is a federal law that your gen ed class, your TBE classes, and help me out, Brian, I don't know whether I pulled the right number, have to be at least eighty percent smaller than our gen ed classes. So, if you look at the two smaller numbers, if you put them together, they'll be bigger than our gen ed classes. If we put our gen ed classes together, they will be way over our guidelines. Every year, we look at that, Chris.
The other thing, we do have some of the outstanding registrations there at Sunny Hill. That's where our largest number is, and, you know, we talked about, and even over the next few days, we need to work hard to try and verify some of the, because these staffing numbers include those kids being in our classrooms, which we still have some students that have not registered. So, is there a possibility, I would say possibility, you know, we may shift the FTE from Sunny Hill someplace else, even in the next couple of days, if we can't verify some of these students. So, that could happen. That's one conversation we had today as well.
We had that conversation with Irma today.
Yes.
And then, just one other question. So, the kindergarten sections at Rose and Roslin?
Yes, sir.
Why do they look like that, for thirteen and three?
Kindergarten, Rose, and Roslin. If you remember, Penny asked that I separate the children that are in AM and the children that are in enrichment. So, if you look at sex, let's look at Rose, section one. Thirteen students will attend our standard kindergarten program, and then they will leave. Ten students will stay all day for our enrichment program, which caps us at twenty-three students. So, that is really just one section, but it's how many children are in our standard program and how many children are our extended program.
It's twenty-three.
So, if you compare that to public, that means that there's a section of twenty at lunch?
There's a section of twenty, four students will leave at lunch, and then there's a section of sixteen that will stay all day. Does that help?
Yep.
If you look at Grove, she has an AM section of twenty-two students, and then she has two that will, will stay for the full day at nineteen and twenty.
So, understanding, right, that our numbers are only up a little bit over this point last year, how do people look at additional staffing? You know, are you, are you okay at two and a half? Are you okay with another three and a half getting to a total of six? Are you somewhere in between?
So, Brian, I missed that earlier. What's the number, the increase, thirty-something?
Twenty-five kids.
Twenty-five kids.
From this point last year.
This timeline is true.
This is more a matter of shuffling chairs, right, on the deck.
Yeah, right, some are going to be lower, some are going to be higher, because they came in, because we, we operate, you know, we don't operate grade centers. If you operate a grade center, you'd be able to kind of even it up. We operate, you know, neighborhood schools.
Or you can also cap and send, which we have not done. That's another strategy, this district's never done that, where we cap and last in, first out, and move them someplace else.
I don't know whether we've ever capped and sent that I've been involved, but we have, at times, offered for students to go to different schools, which is a little bit different than cap and send.
Usually, usually at kindergarten.
We do it in kindergarten.
We do cap and send in kindergarten, yes.
At other, other levels as well, when Rose was very proud of it several years ago, many years ago.
My kids were there.
And I don't know, I, I would be a favor of just asking.
You could, there could be some kids at Rose...
It might solve the problem.
You know, that might be interested.
You might get some kids that, that are fine with, with going to Huff and St. Rose or what have you. I don't want to make up the story, but why don't we ask?
We can try to see if that mentality changed. I, my kids, my, my son went through pretty much twenty-eight straits at Rose every year, from third grade through fifth grade, and we tried to ask, and it's a tough sell, you know? People buy their house and they see where the neighborhood school is, that's where they want their kids to go. That's really a tough, I don't know that that's going to be the solution to the problem.
I wouldn't do it at this time, here on August twelve.
Yeah, that's...
I would, you know, not, you know, recommend that. However, if, if it's something the board wants to discuss, I'd rather have that discussion like in January.
For next time, yeah.
Yeah, and then we could plan accordingly, so.
I, I just want to say that I think that this is a philosophical question we're going through tonight. I mean, if, it depends on how much credence you put into the guidelines that, that we have established. I mean, because the reality is, we can't take the number of kids that are here and divide it by the number of classrooms we have and think that's going to work out, because that's not where the population is distributed. So, the reality is, we have to look at these in individual cases. We have to talk to the principals, we have to talk to the teachers, we have to see what kids are in what rooms. And so, we've always operated with a contingency for our superintendent, so I'm, I'm kind of wondering why we wouldn't have that flexibility built in and worry about the budget. I know we have to cover it. Obviously, we have a lot of concern for that, and we, you know, think, our conversation may change next year if the funding changes, right? But as of right now, with the best information we have, I think that the flexibility might be something that we want to give Dr. Harris moving into the next week or two.
What's your number? What number are you comfortable with?
I can, I mean, obviously, the two and a half's already accounted for, so that's not a contingency. So, to me, it's at least...
Well, we still have to give it to them.
Right, no, I, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, that doesn't give them the flexibility I'm talking about. So, we're, I'm talking four to five. No, not four, no, I'm, I'm talking about five total.
You know, five total.
Yeah, and he's already got a lot of that done, but at least that gives him something. And if he has to come to us for more, that's a whole different conversation then, right?
Yeah, but we don't meet again until after...
Well, that is going to be a special board meeting. You know, I, I don't, I don't see, you know, we're, we're not talking about an open checkbook here then, at that point. I mean, he knows that he's got some constraints, because we know what money we have available. So, but it gives him the flexibility to react to some things that we, that are unknowns right now. Just make, as, as long as we're really respecting the whole class size thing. If we're feeling like, hey, ninety percent of what we're doing is within guidelines and that's good enough, that's a whole different conversation, but that's, you know, I guess, going to have to come out of our conversation as a philosophy of this particular board that's seated right now.
I think, Joe, what you're talking about is whether or not you want to have red numbers on this or not.
Exactly, that's exactly what I'm saying, so...
What it boils down to. And if board's willing to accept some red numbers, then, okay, then we'll move forward. If you don't want me to do my best to try and avoid some red numbers, or if there are red numbers, have some supports in place and some justification on how it's meeting the needs of kids, that's okay too.
Well said.
And that's a good point, your contingency doesn't have to be in adding to a classroom.
No. We're already having those conversations. Mm-hmm.
So, where are we, where are other people on a number they're comfortable with?
So, I, I hear what you're saying, Joe, and I agree that, you know, we have committed to having community schools, and that's important in our community, to build that sense of community, which is one of the reasons I really don't like petitioners. Because I do think that they are, they're, when you get to these numbers, it makes it really difficult.
Let, let me, it just, no, but, but please, let me just say what, how we do do it. Remember, because we have district programming, such as a child with special needs, we do, we do try to grant those families to stay together.
I know.
And, and we've been very, very solid about what we feel is appropriate and what we feel isn't appropriate.
I know, but when you, when you, well, we'll save that for another discussion.
Okay.
But I think one of the most important things we can do as, as a board is to let our teachers know that we do value the education that they're providing to our children. And we have set these guidelines, and I've read the literature that you sent to us that our committee put together last year, and I agree with the guidelines. I think the guidelines are well thought out, they are based on scientific data, and they are good for our district. And so, I agree that we should be committed to staying within the guidelines for the elementary school level. And my only concern is the budget, and I, I hear you, Brian, and Dr. Harris, saying that, you know, we will stay committed to having a balanced budget.
Or better.
Or better, and that we will find a way to fund the additional headcount for teachers. And I, I think that's important. As a board, we are saying that teachers are important and that class sizes are very important to us, and that we will find a way to fund this. And I agree, so, I, I agree with the contingency numbers.
Which one, which number?
The six.
So, you would go up to six?
Two plus four.
Two, you would go to two, okay, so you could be up to six. Just remember, he was asking, you were essentially asking for six point five, right? Yeah, but that's fine, I just wanted to make sure.
Yes.
Okay, so you can go all the way up to six?
Yes.
Okay, how do others feel? I got a five, I got a six, I feel like an auctioneer.
So, just based on our last finance committee meeting and where the budget has come out, we don't have enough room for six without you doing something different this year, right? So, I guess it's easy to say, we'll find it in the budget, but, you know, if I'm on the finance committee, I need to know how we're going to do that before I can just blindly say, and I, and I'm not saying this is a blind conversation, I'm just saying, before we say we're going to add another four hundred thousand to that budget, because that's about what it would be.
Yeah, and see the point, I mean, so the budget in its draft form, the presented, only had a surplus of two hundred and thirty-three thousand.
Two hundred and thirty-three thousand.
So, do you, how do you guys want to address that?
So, I think it's a little bit cart before the horse, maybe. And I know we're on, up against the timeframe, but I, I don't know, based on the work we've done on this budget, necessarily where that can come from, as I sit here today. So, it would be hard for me to say I, I'd go with that level of contingency, knowing that that would put us in the red without knowing where we're going to get it.
Well, yeah, you know, here's what else, because I, I have the same...
Go ahead.
I, I have the same concern. I think that two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars is a conservative number, right? I, I still think, and I mentioned to both, I think, Brian and Tim, I'd like to look at that revenue projection a little bit more, and, and I know that, you know, being conservative budgeters, I think that there is, there's some cushion even in your headcount number that you're budgeting, isn't there?
Yes, there is.
Right, so, I mean, that, because you don't know, you don't know where it's all going to come out until you start running actual payroll.
Which head, which FTE number?
So, if we were to add six, if we were to add six, you think, you think that the actions are still going to come in within that budget?
Right now, in addition to the conservative numbers that we have that show the surplus that we have going into next year, I've got in excess of three hundred thousand dollars additional in salaries allocated on the basis of the current costs.
So, there was contingency budget.
So, you're free from now?
You know, because we, because I have to do that, because I'm figuring that something like that is happening.
You don't know where, you don't know where you have to move them.
We also have issues, as the board knows, that come, that come up in mid-year. You know, we have DLC staff that, that changes, we have arranged things. So, we, we always leave some latitude there when we have to, you know, make adjustments in staff.
We also have the hiring guidelines that we've worked to try to keep our hiring at a lower level, which Tim has a certain amount, certain budget number set, and we have tried to, really hard this year, to keep that number lower at the hiring time.
Because as you saw earlier this evening, we had roughly, what, sixty, sixty-five new teachers? You know, a lot of those are based on attrition, so what happens then is you've got more expensive people leaving and people who are going to leave inexpensive people on the end, so that's part of it.
Isn't that usually accounted for, though, with the PMA model? We know who's retiring.
Right, the industry budget.
So, is the cushion, is the cushion part of an overall contingency, or, I mean, how would we know that that three hundred thousand was there? I mean, otherwise, I mean, I'm kind of with Chris, we're like in the dark. We have no idea that, we're not trying to go to some other line item and say, we're going to spend less on X or Y or Z, because we don't know where this other money is, is being allocated or being, you know. Where's the placeholder, I guess, is what I'm asking.
Right, well, it's in the salary, because, you know, you don't, you don't know what your actual salary number, you know, when you're doing this in the spring, you know, until you start running your actual payroll, right? Because your headcount doesn't translate to a number, right? That's based on where they all get placed.
Or on the salary schedule, I get it.
Right, so you, you kind of have to kind of, kind of guess.
So, how do we know that that's three hundred thousand is what my master...
Well, I don't, if you run a...
Because we ran a payroll already since then, and now I know.
Okay, all right, that, that helps me a little bit, because I'm like thinking... Because I'm like thinking, how do you get to a number of three hundred thousand? I don't know where that number came from. Because, you know, in February, in, in April, we're, we're guestimating. We take this number of people times sixty thousand dollars or whatever. We get this number that we're going to put in our model.
Right.
You know, now, how do we know that we're three hundred thousand over?
We have an actual payroll.
I mean, I think, look, I think what's fair, the way I look at it, right, this is just my way, right? I think that, you know, I think where we have been for the last few years, since like oh eight, oh nine, right, is if we have room, we create smaller class size, right? And I think it's a pri, it would be a priority to do that in the budget. Whatever we provide, I think, you know, before we do a final budget in September, right, we've got to ask you to get actual numbers in there, in a better budget, right? So, when we actually approve the final budget, it'll be based on actual numbers, right? And if it means you've got to squeeze somewhere else, I don't know, supplies, professional development, wherever it is, you've got to squeeze to make it, make that final budget a balanced budget. You know, we're not going to, we're not going to approve. But to me, you know, it's the point about, from a philosophic perspective, when you're building your budget, I think, I think you start, personally, I start here. Now, there's going to come a time when enrollment goes up and we're going to have building constraints that are going to cause class sizes to go up. There's going to be a time potentially when Springfield makes significant funding changes, right? We're going to have budget issues that are going to cause this to go up, right? But I think while we still have some flexibility here, I would favor trying to get down to smaller class size for next year, right? And then just find a spot in the budget. But, I mean, I do share, I mean, I, I think the direction has to be, if you're asking for this and we give it, we still have to have a balanced budget. You know, whatever you have to do to change other line items, it still has to be balanced. I think you guys understand that.
Well, absolutely, yeah.
Well, the other thing is, you know, we always make final tweaks. I mean, it never, it, it gets adjusted as we go. And always, at this time of year, when we know our final headcount, that's when we make those final adjustments all the time. So, that's what-
Well, yeah, and when I get up there, I was going to talk about, you know, this is the tentative budget right now. As we entered into the, you know, our first meeting with the finance committee back about two weeks ago, and before that, it's a continued refining process through the tentative budget phase to the final budget. So, you know, we're talking about one line item here that we'd be adjusting. There's other ones. I mean, it's, it's a process until, and frankly, it's a process through the final budget because then we're looking at modifying things by, you know, looking for additional revenues and/or cutting costs to make sure that things fit as we, as we're monitoring, you know, day to day, week to week, month to month throughout the year. So, it, it, it doesn't, what you see tonight is not the end of the story. It's almost really towards the beginning.
That said, budget constraints are legitimate cause for someone to say, I'm not comfortable adding very many, too. I mean, I, I think, you know, we all kind of have our own unique lenses looking at this. So, I think that that's a, budget concerns can be a very real reason to say, you know, choose my management number, I think, on that, I would, too.
That's why, I guess, I just, it's hard to make those types of decisions without knowing if this is good data. Because the question becomes then is, let's just say it's close to accurate. And we approve six. Now, we're underwater by a couple hundred thousand, whatever it is. And you say, well, I'll find it. Well, I'd like to know where you're going to find it. Because if you can find it that easy, we should find it now. It should have already been found.
Well, it's going to be pain.
Well, that, well, so-
Better make some decisions.
The difficulty is you don't know what pain you're causing, right?
That's right. So, what's going to get cut?
You don't understand what-
Is somebody going to make an argument to cut a program? Oh, we're not going to fund this now or fund that. So, it's just, I think this is a hard situation because we don't have good data. And if we're, if we're, because we don't have the numbers, I get that. You know, we do this in business. But you start with something that you believe is pretty valid. And then, in terms of the decision makers, we need to know if there's fluff built into that number, right? Because otherwise, we're kind of making a decision sort of on the fly. I, I'm with you. I mean, as you guys know, I've supported the small class sizes since I've been here. So, that's preferable, certainly. But on the other hand, we have citizens that look at us and go, you're spending a lot of money here. Now, you're going to spend another four hundred thousand. Where does, where's that coming from? And if it's easily cut, why hadn't it been cut before then? And if it's pain, then it's pain. We have to, and I think that's a board discussion, too. Where are we going to inflict the pain, you know, across the enterprise? In terms of programing or whatever it may be.
You know, some of it, you know, we have, you know, administratively, we have some discretionary latitude. And even some of our professional development accounts, some of our, you know, and if we need to make, you know, I'm just giving you an example. If, if I'm looking for a couple hundred thousand dollars, I'm going to look across the organization where areas that aren't going to have a direct impact on kids. It may have an indirect impact if it goes on too long. I'm talking over multiple years. For, for one year, maybe we make a decision not to do something, you know, that we had planned to do. I mean, it's, it's really that type of discretionary, you know, thinking where we may have to, you know, adjust, you won't see it in the education fund necessarily, but you will, if you go to our line item by line item, we will make some adjustments in some of those areas. And we'll just make some different plans, you know, on how we might allocate some sub-time or some staff development dollars. Now, if the number gets into the millions, that's a, you can't do that. But if you're talking a couple hundred thousand dollars, you know, it seems, you know, I'm just throwing it around. But still, I mean, those are, you know, that staff training stuff's important. And we, we, you know, this district has always had a history of supporting that. But if it's a difference to having an appropriate class size based on the board's priority here, then that's what we'll do for one year and revisit it each time we look at it. Does that make sense? A little bit. I'm giving you a concrete example of what I would do. If you told me, hey, we've got to find this to get a, you know, a balanced number here, we would make some decisions and adjust things accordingly.
So, we're showing an increase of about twenty-five students overall. In the years past in elementary, we've seen a decline, right? So, and I, I remember the number being like fifty to a hundred decline overall in the whole elementary school. So, we're starting to see this, this upturn back, I think, is what we're starting to feel a little bit.
I also think that the increase in the kindergarten numbers, we, we, I remember we've talked about, we always bring in between eighty and a hundred students between kindergarten and first. I think many of those families have decided to join us this year instead of joining us next year. So, that's what I, I, I could definitely crunch some numbers for you and bring some information back.
When it's fine.
Yeah, it looks pretty, I, I would agree with that.
Yeah. I mean, we, the best time to look at is, is when we do our six-day enrollment report for you. Because I will say, and I don't know who brought it up, but I really do feel that we have the best handle on these numbers that we've ever had because we required proof of residency this year. So, parents had to come forward and commit to the district. And, you know, while they're still projections, they won't be solid until day six of the school year. For the three years that I've dealt with this and sat in front of you and tried to figure it out with you, I do feel that these are pretty solid numbers at this time.
Other thoughts from board members? Where are you comfortable number wise? Zero? Anybody comfortable at zero? We all comfortable to two-five, right? Is that the floor? No?
I'm comfortable with the two-five.
So, how many could be comfortable at four? Two and a half plus one and a half? Just one?
At least.
I need to see, I need to see. Wendy, are you a no?
No, we're, we're doing that as a, as a, right?
I'm just trying, yeah, I'm just trying. So, so now I'm at two and a half, one and a half, that was four. How about five? Two and a half and two and a half. Do I lose it? Okay, I haven't lost anybody yet.
I can do five because it coincides with the number that Tim mentioned as well, the three hundred.
Okay.
So, I, I see it as remaining flat, but we're allowing them to use that for this contingency.
Okay.
So, I think I'm out after this.
Okay, okay, okay. That's good. So, so if we go to six, two and a half plus three and a half, how many, how many thumbs or hands do I have? One, two, I could be two, but that's not enough. So, that's, I think, that's, we stop at five. Two and a half and two and a half. Or just five. You use it the way you want.
I think, I think that it's, you know, because we're on the school. And I, and I do, you know, I, I do trust Dr. Harris to make the decisions. So, that is, that is my one reason why I, you know, I think, to give a little lab to understand his conservative nature and, you know, has a patient in his heart as well as, you know, it's obviously a conservative to the larger.
So, Angela, I would agree with that, actually. And I trust Brian, too. I think you know that, you know, we're working together for a year. So, I think if you really believe and your staff really believes you need those teachers, then you'll do what we just, you just talked about earlier. I, I believe you would do that. So-
I won't use it unless I absolutely believe. Yeah, Linda will tell you.
We've had long, long conversations. It's been a busy couple of days.
Even if you get five, FTE, that, and you really want six, you'll find it in the budget somewhere to say, hey, I found another seventy grand or whatever, let's hire another one.
Correct.
I, I would think, right?
Absolutely, if I have to, if I needed to.
Yeah.
I'm certainly going to work within this parameter. And I can tell you, right, sitting here tonight, the two, the, I mean, as I mentioned, you know, the countryside situation, second grade and the second grade at Rose, I would absolutely move those forward. So, truthfully, after that, that leaves it down to the three to work with. And so, but I'm going to use it very carefully and, you know, we, and even if you look at these other scenarios, they all probably have a different solution, in my opinion, of some type. Maybe some of the solutions, no solution. Maybe leave it as is. But each of them will have a different look, based on the needs of the principal.
Just real quick, Brian. I don't think that the, to make Angela feel better, because she's getting rolling here, I don't think the conversation has to stop tonight either. I mean, we're, you have three. If you use those three, we've had this conversation even mid-year in past years where something weird happens and, and we have to pull the trigger. You know, a couple of special ed kids can just throw you off kilter. You only need one or two to show up and make it, make everything different. We'll have another conversation and we'll add one if we have to. And then we'll do what Chris said. Go find, you know, show us that you could find this as a line item, the seventy thousand, because we want to do this, we want to give you this extra contingency. I think that being conservative in the number we give him now doesn't mean that we can't give him more when he needs it. I just think that this is really giving him three just to make sure we get through the beginning of school. Does that make sense?
And I would say, I think we were all okay, right, with the guidance, the class size thing. You know, to Wendy's point earlier, I think all of us on the board were comfortable with the guideline. So, black numbers are a problem, right? And I would even say, now, I, you know, and I'm one of the guys that's been on here for twelve years, where we used to have more red than any other color on this chart, right? So, red, while it's not desirable, sometimes is the worst, right? Depending on like in Cindy's case where they say, you know, we got, we got a, we got a group of teachers and we'd rather have an extra kid in the classroom than have to bring in another teacher into our grid, right? So, sometimes red numbers are not problematic. Other times, it's a good group of kids. Other times, you might have some kids that need a little bit more supervision, right? And so, maybe it makes sense to add a section. So, I think that's why it's really important for you guys to make this a building-driven conversation along with your budget constraints.
Which is what we're prepared to do.
But know that if you really, if, if you want to wave your hands, we want to hear that.
And if there's any more, then we got to, I heard it loud and clear. We'll dictate exactly, you know, point out where we're going to make the adjustment in the budget to pay for it. Got it? Okay?
Any other comments from the board on this? I know there, there was a group of folks that stayed for this conversation. So, I'll just kind of open up a little bit to public comment. Any questions or comments?
My concern is that North Carolina's not showing up in the red. It is when you look at the average, twenty-six and twenty-six is not showing up in the red. And it's not back during the five special education groups, which will be in the classroom forty percent of the time.
So, but it does show up in the red, though.
It will be in the red. It's considered in the red.
It's in the red.
I sure believe it's red.
So-
Okay.
So, the way I-
That made me feel a little bit of a face time, what you guys have said. Thank you.
But you also said, Dr. Harris, that, you know, and I had to deal with this, you know, how, every situation's any different. And when you have a certain class, you know, my own son example, he's got a shared aid. So, you know, he's going to be a distraction, you know? Do you throw another aid in that class? I would hope not. And while you have another three kids coming in from a secondary class, that just makes, that's not an ideal situation to say, here's another aid, it'll alleviate that problem.
I can tell you, I'm not going to be making this decision independently. However, I will be working with the staff at each building and determining what's best for next school, based on their professional judgments and the circumstances of the kids. So, that's what I will do.
Because they'll know all the kids.
And this will be the first year because we've had a really good story since first grade. So, now-
Well, we've had years of it.
I'm here every year, but yes, it's been helpful. So, thank you for giving that good advice. But yeah, it's not ideal this year.
So, Brian, so I'm clear on this. The way I see this is there's six reds, one of which is that kindergarten class at Lines, which, but for the, so you have five. You can fix every one of those on the sheet, just to be clear.
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
The growth was already resolved.
As long as, yeah.
If I can clarify, remember the children at Lines are not going to go into the kindergarten classroom at all.
So, you're still blacked in.
So, I see that as black because those two will be full-time with a certified special education teacher. That's why I really pointed that out.
Road is already resolved.
It already resolved. So, it's already, this sheet is covered as long as there isn't a problem.
That is correct.
Well, you never know what might change. You never know what's changed tomorrow.
Right, understood, right.
But that's why, I feel like we did provide a little contingency.
Absolutely.
Because, and, and, but not-
Five.
But, but a lot of it's accounted for, right? So, if something else pops, you're, you're going to have to come back to us at some point.
The only two that I will tell, as I said, that I absolutely move forward on is the countryside second grade and the Rose second grade. The other situations, I want to, you know, have further conversations with that.
And those are based on your conversations with staff.
That, that happened today. Right.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Do we have to vote on that or?
We voted on the budget in a different direction.
I understand. Stay within the budget.
Okay.
Thank you.
Linda, thank you.
Thank you.
I know this is a lot of work. I know, and I know it's a dynamic process. Let's go to a discussion about the fifteen, sixteen tentative budget. Yeah. That was just one line item. You got sixteen more.
Okay, well, thanks. We'll continue the budget conversation now. First, we'll talk a little bit about the fourteen, fifteen budget and what it's looking like as we wind down the accrual process for fourteen, fifteen. As you know, the fourteen, fifteen budget year ended June thirtieth of fifteen. So, we're about four, five weeks past that right now. When the auditors come in, they'll be looking at the kind of borderline expenses and revenues between the end of fourteen, fifteen and the beginning of fifteen, sixteen. And they'll be accruing the funds back and forth between that line as they, as they see, as, you know, not in isolation with discussions with us, as we see fit as far as where those expenses and revenues more appropriately fit. So, let's start, let's kind of go back and we'll start with fourteen, fifteen. And Cheryl can kind of give you an overview as far as, oops, it just went off, what that looks like.
So, this, um, slide shows a recap of our operating funds budget and our, um, pre-audit actuals where we, our, our general ledger shows we ended this year without any audit adjustments, as you talked about with their accruals. So, the budget total revenue was, um, one thirty-four, one forty-five, oh, four-oh, and we came in just slightly over that. As you can see, our expenditures are a hundred and thirty-two million, six seventy-eight, and we actually worked real hard to keep those down this year, and we're at a hundred and thirty-nine, oh, six. We did operational transfers, which includes our capital leases, and that net, uh, is slightly higher at one point eight million, where we budgeted one point three. Uh, we estimated our, well, our budget was a net surplus of one hundred and thirty-one thousand, and we're showing, right now, our books at a million and a half dollars surplus. The property acqui, acquisition is below the line from our fund balance, and then it shows our ending fund balance this year of the operating funds at forty-four million, three fifty-nine, three.
So, when you look at this, you know, that net surplus, that's what, that's what's attributed to our operations, the, uh, as Cheryl mentioned, the property acquisition is something that isn't part of our normal operations, and that's why you see that below the line and not reflected in our operational expenses. You know, a million and a half dollars, that's before, uh, our accruals, you know, we could fluctuate as much as a half million dollar, then I safely say that we're gonna wind up as, as, as surplus in a neighborhood of a million dollars, probably a little bit more when we get through the accrual process. And when you think about it, the scope of a hundred and thirty-six, a hundred and thirty-four million dollar budget, we're looking at less than a percent surplus, so a million dollars is a lot of money, but in the scheme of the size of the budget, it's less than a percent variance. Going on, looking now forward into fifteen, sixteen.
Sure, I'm sorry. Can I ask a question about?
Sure, yeah.
Um, how does Allstate fit into this?
Allstate, um, Brian can chime in on this one, Allstate, um, that was a transaction that happened in the thirteen, fourteen school year, or thirteen, fourteen fiscal year, but, um, because of the cash basis, the number, that, the actual revenues from the property tax revenues for fourteen, fifteen were reduced, but in arriving at that, as part of that one thirty-four pre, one thirty-four, two seventy-one pre-audit actual, the component relative to property taxes accrues that number back in as if it, even though the expense occurred in fourteen, fifteen, when the auditors come in, they're gonna accrue that expense back to thirteen, fourteen, and that's why we are showing that we're realizing actually that revenue in the fourteen, fifteen year.
Okay.
Did we pay, did we pay that whole thing off, we did that in one shot, right?
One shot.
They deducted it.
Well, I mean, the transaction was a one shot.
Right.
Transaction, right.
The transaction is a one shot.
So if you, if you look at the audit we had for fourteen, right, we took the charge for it in fourteen, right, and then it actually is sitting on a balance sheet, much as we have a balance sheet, right? And so, in this audit, right, they're actually, it's actually gonna show as a reduced, it's a reduced cash receipt, right, but it'll be, the balance sheet transaction gets reversed so that it, it makes a hole in the revenue side.
For fourteen, fifteen, right.
That's the way the auditors will do it.
I got it. So that's all part of that process, now, that being said, as you see.
Dick Rickart's in the house. Hey, Dick.
We also have the property transaction of what I just talked about, that's below the house, below the line in, below the house, below the line in fourteen, fifteen for actuals. So, any other questions on thirteen, on fourteen, fifteen before we go forward? All right. So we'll get into fifteen, sixteen tenet of budget, again, the budget process, you know, we've, we, in about three weeks after, actually in about two weeks after school gets started, uh, the buildings, the grounds, uh, leadership and myself will be going from building to building and interviewing the principals and starting to get an idea of what they think their facilities' needs are for this upcoming year, so that's the beginning of the budget process for this upcoming year. We did the same thing last year, so the budget process really starts at about the time that we're, you know, for the next period that we're wrapping up or just getting underway for the real budget for the prior period. So, the budget process for fifteen, sixteen started way back last fall, um, and it continues. We went, as I mentioned earlier, we went to finance committee, we, we talked about a budget at finance committee, we tweaked some numbers since the finance committee, I sent a memo to the board back about two weeks ago that showed some adjustments that were made, about, I don't know, fifteen or so adjustments that were made, major adjustments that were made in the budget since the finance committee meeting, and we're gonna see some changes as we get more information and, uh, and look at things, you know, for example, the salaries we talked about tonight, I added, because I knew that somewhere down the line here, we're gonna be looking at salaries and possibly increasing, I plugged in another three hundred thousand dollars. Now, we can refine that more as we find out how, you know, what's gonna happen with the possible addition of the, of the FTE, so that type of thing is happening yet over this next month. As you know, the plan is to, uh, to ask the board to put the tenet of budget on display later this week, it'll be on display for over a month, then, uh, come back September fifteenth, conduct a, conduct a budget hearing, and then the board will entertain whether or not they wanna improve the budget at that point. But all along there, we're looking at the numbers and we're refining things as more information comes in, more information on kindergarten enrollment, enrichment enrollment, for example, I know it's, we're getting towards the end of that, um, when summer, as summer school's wrapping up here, um, we may be tweaking some tuition numbers relative to summer school tuition numbers, so there, things like that are still being refined. One of the things that we're, a, a big thing that we're looking at this year, the administration, uh, the executive council got together and we talked about, on an operational level, the, uh, thematic goals that we're looking at for the district this year, and means the rallying cry of the, the thematic goal here is personalized growth, and the defining objectives to get to that personalized growth for the students is blended learning, you know, these are some familiar to everybody here, blended learning, social emotional learning, um, optimal time for learning, and quick two-twenty, digital age instruction, and the operating objectives to, of, to achieve those defining objectives is budget priorities, number one, facilities and planning, professional development to support it, staffing enrollment, curriculum instruction and assessment. Again, standard operating adjustments, budget priorities, facilities planning, professional development, staffing enrollment, curriculum instruction and assessment. I'll talk a little bit about.
Sure. So, um, some of the highlights of the FY sixteen budget is, um, one that we're really proud of, it's the nineteenth year for balanced budget in a row, uh, also the state board of education ranks each district on their financial strength, we are in the highest ranking of recognition, again. We have a triple-A standards of four bond rating, which means, uh, they believe we can meet our financial obligations. We have also nearly two million for instructional technology included in this budget, and also included in this budget is the cost and the revenue for the, um, enrichment program for our extended day kindergarten.
One of the things that we looked at this spring, as, you know, we, we know things are tightening up, we're not sure, we continue to be not sure what's happening in Springfield, although the picture, at least for the immediate future, is a little clearer, but because we knew that we were coming up, and we were, we really wanted to make sure that we were gonna be in good shape for fifteen, sixteen, um, with Brian's leadership, we, we initiated a number of, uh, cost-cutting measures planned for fifteen, sixteen that include the following, energy conservation, as you, as you know, synergistic has been employed with the district now, we have a person starting with us, with that company as of August thirty-first, so we are anticipating and expect, uh, significant energy savings this next year, new hiring guidelines, Mary Dudek mentioned that a little bit earlier today, as far as where, when we're replacing people, uh, for retirements or attrition, that we're very mindful of where we put the new people in on the salary schedule and that, you know, encourage savings that way. Uh, reduce substitute teacher spending, new caps on extra duty spending, uh, changing the, the use of support staff, reduce the use of temporary employees, reducing travel and food expenses, and, uh, enjoying some benefit with the new transportation and, uh, WAN contracts for Comcast. Any questions so far? Okay, now we're looking at fifteen, sixteen, um, for the operating funds, beginning fund balance, we're looking at a fund balance that are roughly forty-three and a half million dollars, revenues we're anticipating one thirty-six, five sixty-nine, nine eighty-two, expenditures one thirty-four, four fifty-three, four forty-six, net before other financing, uh, luckily just over too many dollars, transfers, leases, again, that primarily of that one point, roughly nine million dollars has to do with, um, uh, device and associated purchases and costs relative to, um, the digital, digital age learning program. That surplus we're looking at two thirty-three, nine oh eight, and that adds to the beginning fund balance, we have the final fund balance at forty-three, nine four, nine oh four, five oh nine. Now, again, these numbers are conservative, I expect that we'll probably, just like last year, you know, when we looked at that last slide, a year ago at this time, we were looking at a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, they came in, we're gonna be coming in roughly ten times that. I'm not gonna promise we're gonna be ten times that next year, but, um, um, you know, it is conservative, and as I mentioned with regard to the salaries, you know, we, we do have, you know, that's a, a, a couple very, not to that same degree, we do have placeholders in this stage of the budget, um, understanding that some of the costs are gonna change between now and, a month from now and certainly throughout the year, so, again, you're gonna see some areas where it looks like we're gonna be spending over budget, but we're watching that stuff on a, a daily, weekly, monthly basis, and we're gonna, uh, keep expenses in control to make sure that we, that we stay within budget. We're really, the, the main thing that we have control over is expenses, we don't have a whole lot of control over revenues, I mean, we're at the, you know, we've got property tax revenues that are, you know, the lion's share of our revenues, state funding and federal funding, um, so the only thing that we really have control over is, is expenses. And this is gonna tell you what we're talking about here, operating revenues, eighty-three percent of our revenues come from the levy or the property tax revenues, uh, the next highest is state aid, other revenues, um, tuition, you know, tuition fees, that type of thing, and in federal way is about, is only about three percent of our revenues. Now, the feds have always been, not always, but in recent history anyway, have been very, very good in making timely payments. This last year, we were concerned about categorical grant payments from the state, they did come in, we had a couple categorical grant payments, uh, made during the month of July after the end of the fiscal year, however, those will be accrued back, in the accrual process back into fourteen, fifteen. On the expense side, as you might expect, you know, three-quarters of our expenditures have to do with, are related to benefits and salaries, purchase services about thirteen percent, supplies six, capital over one, and due to tuition, three percent. Operating fund balances, this chart tracks, you know, the history of our fund balances through the last ten years, and you can see they've gone in upward direction, um, in two thousand nine, you can see that green block on top, that was basically a temporary bump in the, in the fund balance because the, the, the board sold bonds in order to buy this, you know, to build this building, and of course, as this building was constructed, that money went into expenses. As you continue on forward, you can see in twenty-fourteen, you can see the T-TAP settlement reflected in twenty-fourteen, um, otherwise that blue bar, which is the actual fund balance, would be up to the top of that red bar, and then again, in twenty-fifteen, you can see the same, um, kind of reduction shown in our operating fund balance. Any questions on that? Okay. That's it. So that's it for the general discussion, um, any questions or discussion or?
Questions from board? Now, I know a lot of people are at the finance committee, we get a lot of our questions answered. So the process from here, right, you will, you don't need an action from us, but you'll, you'll go ahead and post.
Just direction to put it up.
It needs to be posted for thirty days, right?
Correct.
So, at our business meeting in September, uh, 'cause we have to approve this by September.
Right, by the end of September.
We'll have the hearing and have to take action at the same meeting, not prefer.
Correct.
Right, it's always preferred to be able to have the hearing at a different meeting than when we have to take action.
But because of time constraints, it's time around, we have to do it.
But I mean, if we think about this and the levy and other things, you know, with.
The levy we have set up, so that has to be different, so.
Yeah, with us moving to only the one business meeting a month, you know, we may have to start the process a little bit earlier.
Right.
To try to avoid the hearing and vote on it, let's hang on.
Right.
What do you think the audit's gonna be?
Probably the first week of October.
And that was what it was last year, and I know that was a concern, if I remember correctly, before previous years, there was, it was late, but they did hit our target and I, you know, anticipate that being the case.
We've had discussions.
And you have, when's the next finance committee meeting?
I think it's the eighth.
September?
September, yeah.
So by then, you'll, you can, you'll have a better sense for.
Right, what we'll do is re, you know, we'll, again, we'll be making adjustments between now and then, and we'll review that at the finance committee meeting, and then roughly a week later, we'll, you know, the board will entertain the, both of, the hearing as well as approval of the budget.
So you'll distribute, distribute that, Austin, obviously anybody who's interested, try to go to the finance committee meeting on the eighth. Okay. Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Summer projects recap.
We're gonna have Tim there and, uh, have Tom joining up the table to recap our capital projects this summer.
Uh, uh, we're gonna have a, uh, quick summary of our capital projects outcomes, presently, uh, energy-efficient exterior wall mounted light fixtures, um, we're looking to, uh, complete before, uh, before the end of this month, um, we had a little delay with some of the materials coming in, uh, but that looks like that has been resolved, so the contractor is working, um, quite vigorously to complete on time. Matter of fact, if you're interested, you can see examples of them, they just went on out here, and so the new LED lights are out there, uh, already conserving the synergy.
Oh, I thought that's why these went out.
That's part of the program.
That's part of the, that's part of the two, it's next month it'll be every other light on this building. Didn't they go to.
This building actually has daylight harvesting and occupancy sensors, so nobody moved over there.
Well, come in lights, but.
You gotta, you just gotta wave once in a while to say we're here.
That is what it was, it was automatically show up 'cause there was no movement.
Yeah.
That, that's not a good sign for anyone, but go ahead.
And, well, the other thing is that for some reason this extends, that work extends into the school year, it's not a big deal 'cause it's after all, we're stuck, it's not really in the way with kids.
Yeah, contractors have made a commitment that once school starts, they'll work second shift to complete it, uh, to avoid interference with, uh, our daily activities. Huff Street School, we, uh, we, uh, converted a regular classroom into a kindergarten classroom, this is a picture of it, we had one item to finish that was finished, um, actually today, our carpenter finished it and installed it, so that kindergarten is ready to go. Hit the hood twice. Barbara Rose, um, not a, a very fancy project, but a very useful one, renovation of the combustion air supply system. Just to let you know, during our last severe winter, Barbara Rose froze up the circulation pumps for the chiller and, um, also the hot water heater, um, it was, uh, trouble shot back to the fact that the combustion air was unable to heat sufficiently enough, so we were blowing that cold air in, and the boiler ran twenty-four, seven during that severe weather, so it kept bringing in that combustion air, and in doing so, we froze off two pipes, luckily no damage, but what we're doing is, uh, preventing that from ever happening in the future, this is Barbara Rose, North Barrington will be asking to do that next year, it's a.
It's a sister school, it has an identical problem over there. So this is phase one to resolve that design issue. Grove Playground. Grove Playground is in process. Our civil engineering drawings have been completed. We have the tops done on it, the, we're ready to go with that application. The school has picked out their landscape architect, and we had our first meeting with the PTO and the principal, started to kind of look at where we're going with this. They had a meeting, I believe, today at ten AM, just the PTO, the principal, some staff members, and landscape architect. We, in building the grounds, and our civil engineer, Dewalt Hamilton, have already communicated with that landscape architect to come together with the meeting so that we could start moving the process forward. You will also shortly be seeing one of those fundraising thermometer signs over at Grove to the right of their main entrance. That was approved by the village to allow that for a ninety-day period with a ninety-day extension. So they're moving forward on their fundraising, and we're moving forward with them on design and stuff right now.
For a little bit more context, Grove is, their PTO is fundraising to put in a substantial playground, and what we did with district funds was ground part work. There's a lot of drainage issues and things like that. So the two will become one eventually.
The two are working together, and we're working with the village on a few issues, and they've been very good partners with us. So Grove Playground is on course.
The PTO is excited, and they've got some great ideas, and they're well-rounded in their ideas too. And, you know, it's been a cool meeting to, at least one, and they, they seem to have their motivation in the head on the street.
Good group, I think it'll be an exciting outcome. District-wide inspections. What's happening is every ten years, we're required by the regional office of education to perform the ten-year life safety inspection. That process is in process. The engineers and the architects are scouring our buildings right now, going through every inch and nook and cranny of the buildings, and starting to write their notes. They will go through this process, complete it, develop the, the report, and send that forward to us. I expect a report somewhere around late October, November, and then we'll present that to the board, and it'll give us some goals in our capital projects in the near future. I hope that the report will be short. To the Barrington Service Bridge at the high school. This is a concept drawing of the bridge, so it's not very fancy right now, but that is the type of bridge we're putting in. Presently, they are in the middle of the finalizing of the shop drawings and getting it to the bridge manufacturers. We are planning right now, next week, for our first pre-con meeting with the design and engineers, and the high school, and the athletics department, and the PE department, and all participants who will be affected as we take this bridge down. The schedule for the bridge is a completion in late October. We should have that completed. We will monitor it. It's a preliminary schedule. Hopefully, everything will go smooth, and depending upon adjustments with the high school's needs, it might shift a little bit. So presently, that's the...
When you say shift, you meant the timeline, not the actual bridge itself?
No.
It's not a suspension.
No, no. We'll, we'll have no shifting of this bridge.
You mean it's not going to be like a drawbridge or anything?
No. No drawbridge, no articulation.
Drawbridge with a knight?
It's gonna, it'll be nice, straight, level, and firmly planted in the ground. So that process is going forward. We do have a preliminary schedule, but we have not sat down and reviewed that in, in a cooperative group yet. That will be happening, we're looking to do that next week. It's going to be a little difficult to grab everybody, we might have to do a night meeting with them, but...
But everybody knows you need to get in before winter.
Everybody knows, and, and they are all well aware of it. I've had several conversations with Steve, the principal, and Mike Otches, our AD, and they've had the schedule sent to them in advance, so they, they know what they're looking at and where we're going at. Pavement sidewalks and renovations. We've had several. One of our major renovations is at Prairie. What we've done is widened the road in the back service road, eight feet on either side. We've striped it, we've put crosswalks, we added a couple sidewalks back over there to add multiple exit points, actually, three exit points, for the buses to now load and unload in the back of the building. This way, it will facilitate open access to the front parking area, and hopefully, it's going to relieve our congestion on Dunham Road to make it safer for our staff and parents during those loading and unloading times. That work has been completed. We've put ballards around the light fixtures. Every ballard has been painted bright yellow, safety color, and there are reflective stripes on the parking lot lights out there. We also, on the front of that, at the beginning, we included swing gates, so that when the buses are all loaded in there and stop, the swing gates can be closed to prevent any possible entry by vehicles other than the buses. So that'll allow safe loading and unloading of the students onto and off of the buses, into and out of the school. So that has been completed. We also were able to put a new overlay on top of that, so that that road surface should be very good for the next fifteen years out there. So we, we actually added four inches of overlay on top of it, and we added some curving, and we also had to add water retention back there to meet our Lake County stormwater management requirements. We also did minor projects in pavement as part of our pavement conservation program. We did a couple areas, one which would be interesting to the students is over at Hager Street. We renovated that sidewalk entrance over there. So now, instead of having the blacktop slope that kind of was coming in over there, that was all eliminated. We re-graded the area, we put in new fencing over there, we put in a new entrance gate, and we put a nice level, flat concrete sidewalk for them to enter and exit that area in the morning and in the afternoon.
You're going to spoil it.
Now, we just, we're tired of seeing them slipping on the, on the slant. We also did basic renovations on paving throughout several areas in here at Roslin Road and the back bus area. Some of these areas are patches and patches in the concrete, in various areas like that to maintain and, and hold on to it until we're in need to renovate the whole area. Gives us a little longer life. Also, we did some curving and drainage renovations over at the high school too, on the south side of the service road by the varsity baseball field. We were getting erosion on that retention wall that goes along the dock, and we reworked it and prevented that. It's pretty, pretty much on sidewalks. Roofing replacements. The two roofing replacements that we did were sections of Prairie, which basically we have now re-roofed Prairie. It has been about a total of six years to complete total re-roofing of Prairie that we did in sections. We did it in sections by doing infrared scanning, making sure that we were hitting the sections that needed to be re-roofed and not just wasting roofing. So the final section of Prairie was just recently done, and we've hit another section over at the high school. Completed the, the re-roofing over there. Both projects are complete, there's a few punch lists I need to go through. Building automation system upgrade. This is our final phase of the automation upgrade. We did one upgrade last year. We have now removed the nineteen-eighties PMI portion of our automation system, and we are up to snuff. We will finish our last migration of that change, effective at the high school next week. That will be complete, and then we'll do a little bit of bug working out. It's, it's pretty extensive computerized automation system that...
So that basically means getting rid of pneumatics and putting in digital?
We, we have very little, and we had very little pneumatics, but what it was, was what we, we converted from a very old antiquated software system to an upgraded software system that facilitates much more control and energy savings capabilities, trending and such. The system that we had that we migrated away from the PMI system is so antiquated, antiquated right now, Johnson Controls has about two technicians who knows how to work on it. And all they do, were doing to me for the last five years, is begging to get rid of it. So this is, this is a much more digital, new age operation. Keyless access. We are completing our final phase. We've, we've had multiple phases on keyless access. What that means is instead of using a mechanical key, we use a key card to enter the buildings. We have moved from standalone operations to a district-wide server, that this card is seen at every single building the same way, and it is now up to date. It is functioning. We should complete by the end of this week, and then do our final punch list and fine tuning.
And financially, we are...
Financially, we are within budget. We will have a reserve. We've used very little of our contingency on the project. We, we've done a little contingency on undercuts and a few additions here and there, but we've stayed quite tight to our budget, so we'll have a, we'll have a surplus on our capital fund. And presently, we should come in, and ninety percent of our projects will be in on time. We have two that are, our security camera project that will come in. Prairie will finish up probably two weeks into the school year, but what they've done at Prairie is they pulled all the conduit, not conduits, all the cabling this week. They'll be complete with it. So any possible interference at the school will be eliminated. So they won't be pulling tiles and running cables, that's all going to be complete. They'll just be at the ends, making the connections. The existing camera system will stay operational until they make a changeover. So we'll pick a Friday afternoon and turn off the old one, turn on the new one. The one that was completed, which was at station today, we just did training, and the associate principal over there, Tim, was very happy with the system, and my two technicians who are going to maintain the system said it's incredibly user-friendly and much more detailed with the conversion from analog cameras to IP digital cameras.
I think it's also worth noting that you've got a couple projects in here that you believe are going to qualify for some grant money.
Yes, we were very fortunate. We had grant funding from the Illinois Emergency Management Agency, sorry. That grant gave us two-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars approximately, and when our cost came in for the window filming, which was completed, when that cost came in, we were only around eighty-thousand dollars. So we had around a hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars that we couldn't use. So we petitioned, Jeff and myself petitioned with them, if we could use our shovel-ready projects and security cameras and keyless entry. They called us at the last minute and told us, "Where's your bills?" And we're like, "Well, you never approved it." So, "No, it's approved." So we actually scuttled and ran and got everything together and sent it into them, and I actually sent in over three-hundred-thousand dollars worth of invoices. So if everything goes well, crossing our fingers, we will get the total sum back, which is, was not expected also in our capital. So that's another fund that will come back into the capital project. The security camera portion of it and the keyless entry was never anticipated to grab a grant. So we were very fortunate, and it was very nice of the, the, the grant managers to have seen that and to call me. So we welcomed that extra grant funding.
It's always interesting what, how the state operates. I had to say it. Can't make other payments, but they can make these payments, so I, who knows?
Different pot of money.
I, I know it is.
Pot by pot, pot by pot.
Yep.
This one's actually funded through Homeland Security.
Correct, it's federal money.
It's federal money. So I was very, very happy to have been able to work with them at that, towards us, especially since the DECA grants that we were going to go for with our LED lights was put on hold.
So as what was mentioned before, we will go out and grab a bid on that demolition at the Kelsey Grove property and, and bring that back into consideration. We'll certainly wait until we get some final numbers here and, and make sure it fits with the allocation.
Any questions?
Well, good, good summer.
Yes, it has been, thank you.
A few good ones to get that bridge in.
Yes.
Okay, our next agenda item is the agenda for our Committee of the Whole meeting. Do you have the slide?
Okay, so, let's see here. Yes, we do. I, I did want to ask the board if you wanted to have any further discussion on your goals, you know, you...
Yeah, we can, let's put it up there, and we'll have a quick conversation.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure, and we never really wrapped it up, I didn't know. And then that would be a short conversation, but then the lengthy, we'll do a staff presentation and certainly have some, you know, good conversation around the blend in learning, as well as digital instruction, and, and have discussions, and so the board's comfortable about where we're headed on some of our curriculum instruction issues.
Could we expect to have six-day in moment numbers, or will you just put that in our packet?
That, we, I can provide that as an informational item, correct, at that point. You know, if we need to have any further discussion around that, we can.
Any other topics that people want to cover at that first, at the September Committee of the Whole? We can always add it during the, during the conversation.
We can, there may be an operational thing there with the enrollment if we need to. We'll see. Hopefully, things will be resolved.
If we could add middle school numbers and high school numbers and enrollment in there too.
Absolutely.
Okay, closing ceremonies. Is there a motion to maintain the confidentiality of the closed session minutes? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So, a second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming tonight and staying.
Do you have a lot here?
I may have to go to the bathroom and come back.
So weird.
How much is there really allowed?